The scouts to come forward. And Vice Mayor Taylor, I'll give you the mic.
Well, Mayor, thank you. We're excited to have the scouts here tonight. I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves and then Zach Perius from Troop 286 is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm Zach Perius and I'm from Troop 286.
I'm Kayla Weaver and I'm from Troop 832.
And Vice Mayor Taylor, before they do the pledge and thank you, for the two of you, because they're doing their communication merit bags and citizenship in the community, here's something the mayor needs to do. You ready? Watch closely. I call the meeting to order. Welcome to our March 3, 2016 Town Council Meeting. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Zach?
May the audience please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. The aunts may be seated.
Thank you, Zach. And we have two things for you. A copy of the Constitution we like to give each scout that attends our meeting. And Mayor, since I'm a Cub Master, we have a little Cub chair for the scouts. So let me tell you how this little Cub Scout chair goes, right? Because we're going to give them a big hand, the way you do that in Cub Scouts is you raise your hand real big and you give them a big hand, okay? On three, let's all give them a big hand. Ready? One, two, three. There you go. Okay. Mayor, do you have anything that you'd like to say or leave with the scouts here?
After a big hand like that, no. Please proceed.
Thank you. You may be seated.
As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. Tonight, the invocation will be offered by Pastor Eric Jones of the Evident Life Church. Pastor Eric.
Mayor Lewis and council members, thank you for having me. Let's bow our heads and let's pray. God, we come to you tonight and we say that you are God and that there is no other and that you are good. Lord, I'm just reminded of how blessed we are to live in this town where we have freedom, where we have financial prosperity and opportunity, God, where we have good schools and education opportunities, Lord. I thank you that we have safety here in Gilbert, the number two safest city in the U.S. It's amazing. We are a blessed people and we just recognize even tonight that every good and perfect gift comes down from the Father of lights. It's from you, God. We are not too proud to recognize that we can't do this on our own, that we lean on you. And we also recognize, Lord, that there are those in our community that are hurting, those that are struggling, those that are in need right now, and we want to lift them up to you. Your word, the Bible says that Jesus is our hope. And so I just want to speak the name of Jesus, the love of Jesus, the provision that is in him, the grace, the peace, the mercy that is in Christ Jesus over all of those in our community who are finding themselves in places of need, whether it's financial, emotional, relational, any kind of struggle that they're dealing with. We just ask God that you would help us also to be the hands and feet and to continue to be that kind of a community that serves one another, loves one another and cares for one another. I'm reminded of so many things and so many people in this community. They're housing the homeless, churches opening up their doors for the homeless, the senior center taking care of those in need in our community who are homebound, Lord. I thank you for the different food pantries like Open Arms that are in our communities helping those in need right here in the town of Gilbert, Lord. We are a blessed people and we ask that your blessing would come upon those in our community, our neighbors who have need. Lord, I thank you for those who are leading the town of Gilbert, those who are sacrificing, who are giving, who are putting themselves on the line, even our council members and our mayor here this evening. Lord, I speak blessings over them and their families. Ask that the peace that passes, all understanding would guard their hearts and their minds in Christ Jesus. Lord, I ask that the spirit of wisdom and revelation to know you more would continue to come upon our leaders here in this community. I thank you for our first responders, for the policemen, policewomen, the firefighters, the EMTs, all of those who put their lives and their time and even their families on the line for us, Lord. God, we bless them in the name of Jesus, the name that's above every name, the one who was, who is, and who is to come. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen. Pastor Eric, thank you.
Our town clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor John Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor, or Jordan Ray, sorry.
Here.
A quorum is present.
We will continue on the agenda with the presentations and proclamations. Councilmember Cook on pillar of the month.
Thank you, Mayor. This month's highlighted pillar is respect. As council members and town staff, we agree to listen and communicate openly with the goal of building mutual respect. We pledge to treat everyone with courtesy, politeness and dignity. We value individual and cultural differences and follow the golden rule.
Thank you. I would like to invite down Michaela Figueroa, please. On behalf of the Gilbert Town Council, I would like to extend a very special recognition to you for your service to the town. You put the Gilbert community first in many ways, from your involvement in Girl Scouts, National Honor Society and your church, to your work with Friends of the Needy and Keystone. Many citizens are touched by your kind heart. We wish you the best of luck on your future endeavors. Congratulations on being named the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year for the second year in a row. You're a valuable ambassador to the town of Gilbert, signed by our honorable Mayor John W. Lewis. Congratulations.
All right. Can I invite the budget and finance team up for just a second here? Right. So we have a special award. It's still special to us, even though it's the 17th consecutive year. You guys are outstanding. But before I share some thoughts, did you guys have anything you wanted to say or share about the budget and your work? Sure?
This is our budget team. They work hard all year long preparing the budget and the award is for actually this fiscal year. And I'm just really proud of the work they do and the long hours they put in and keeping us on track and keeping track of all of the details. They do great work.
Thank you. So the official name of the award is the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. It's awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association. And so this is, like I said, our 17th year to receive this. This is the first budget where we've received additional distinction for being outstanding as a policy document. Furthermore, the number of positive radar marks or outstanding radar marks has more than doubled with this presentation. So, I mean, it was awesome before. It's just getting better. And I will say, as a regular citizen, of course, I haven't, you know, I've been elected for a little bit here, but I used to read that budget. And our budget has so much in it that you can understand as a regular citizen, it's really important that we have that so our citizens can hold us accountable. We even have performance metrics in there. I don't know who does that voluntarily, offers metrics so that you can measure how well we're performing, but we do that in our budgets. I'm very proud of it. This is a very well-earned award. And so with that, let's give them a big hand of congratulations.
Chris Parasot.
Laura Lorenzen.
Justine Bruno.
Amber Costa.
This is the famous budget team. And now for the picture. Thank you. Another big round of applause. Kurt, if you can come up here and move that a few slides. At the end of the agenda is the current events from the mayor, and I have just a couple, and then we've got one more presentation. Coming up, we'll do that one last. So coming up this Saturday, oh, a week from Saturday, excuse me, is the Arizona Heroes to Hometown Salute a Soldier 5K Run at Freestone Park. More details on our town website. We invite you to participate and come cheer them on or run. On March 16, early morning, is the East Valley Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, another great event involving a lot of individuals. It will be in Chandler this year at the Chandler-Gilbert Community College. And if you'd like more information about it, this information is also on the website. And this flyer at the bottom has a web link, evmph.org. And, oh, flyers in the back of the room for those who are here at council chambers. Concerts, downtown concerts, we have several coming, including March 17 and March 31. More details on the town website. Kapow, March 19, 8:00 to 8:00 a.m. to noon at Freestone Park. This is where our superheroes come out from all over the place around Gilbert and they run. And they are cute because usually are younger Gilbertonians. And let's go back one slide. One slide that I forgot to pass on to Kurt, but I was reminded today, on Saturday, March 12, it's Aviation Day at our Gateway Airport, our Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. That is a day where families love to go out to the airport, see old airplanes, see lots of new things happening, and you're invited to the airport on that day. Next slide. Two individuals I'm going to invite up front, John and Deborah, please. Last August, at the Town Council Retreat, and you can just write here, and I'll get to the two of you in just a minute, there were two major initiatives that the council, many initiatives, but two that were talked about related to our communications needs assessment that had taken place, had to do with the subject that you see up on the screen, behavioral health, substance use, and also domestic violence. We appreciate Councilmember Eddie Cook and his efforts with domestic violence at the MAG meetings and some of the local things, and also Councilmember Victor Peterson with our four-city effort. So we're getting ready for a great event next October that you've told us a little bit about and you'll tell us more. But for a couple of minutes, I wanted to give you an update on the initiative related to this subject. And we called one of our great community leaders to be the task force leader, the task force chairman, John McHatten on my right. And then as we proceeded over the last few months with meetings related to this topic, we decided it was time to share with the community some of the information that we had learned related to behavioral health and substance use. And so we had one member of our task force who accepted the assignment to organize an educational clinic that was held last Saturday at the Sovereign Grace Church, and that would be Deborah Geisling. And Deborah put together a fabulous event and individuals came from all over the valley to tell us about resources and then individuals came from all over Gilbert to participate. We had a focus on inviting our faith groups and they came. And we left with 54 of the attendees signed up to be a contact person for their faith group. Now, Bob and Chief Dorn, come on up here. Two of our local resources that were very involved in this and are also serving on the task force, Police Chief Tim Dorn and Assistant Fire Chief Bob Badgett. And I'm going to have the two of you come up here because we have a certificate of appreciation for both John and Deborah. And they're similar, slightly different wording, but I'll just go ahead and read this. Certificate of Appreciation Presented to John McHatten for Service Rendered as the Chairman of the Gilbert Behavioral Health and Substance Use Task Force and for Organizing the Community Educational Clinic. Thank you for, and you'll see that on the flyer that was handed out and the whole theme of the conference of the educational clinic, inspiring confidence, hope and compassion. And it's got the date that this was presented. And John, there you go. And Deborah, and I think, Bob, let's have you come on this side. So this is a group of four that made some great things happen. And I'm just going to see, John, I'll start with you, and then Deborah, if you had any initial comments, and if the chief or Bob also have comments. But anything else at this point, because we're giving the council an update, we're giving the community an update from what happened last Saturday, please.
Last Saturday was a dream come true, a vision come true. We've been working on this for about four years. It happened, actually, and initiated in my heart at least, at the East Valley Mayor's Prayer Breakfast in Gilbert, when we had all the chiefs sitting around a table and they were tasked, everyone in the room was tasked with the responsibility of assessment, a needs assessment within the East Valley. And what would that one major need be? And they were finished so quickly, I went over to their table and I simply asked, what is that need? And they said, John, that's easy. Mental health. There's no solution. I heard those words come also from Chief Dorn. And as a result of a community that comes together, we do have a working solution now.
I just want to say that it was an honor to participate in this. And I'm very grateful for the response from the faith leaders, from our leadership, Chief Dorn, from Bob Badgett with fire and our mayor and town council. Just very grateful for doing this.
Real quick, it was an uplifting day. The more you get a chance to interact with groups like this, the more proud you are to represent and get the honor to work in Gilbert and to be surrounded by such incredible people who shared such personal stories. Everybody left there on a very, very high note. So thank you for allowing us to be part of it and we look forward to the partnership going forward.
Just another example of what we do best here in Gilbert, and that's the community coming together to work on an issue. And this is a start. And that's one of the commitments we made coming out of this, that this isn't the end. We need to keep going. We need to keep working on this issue. Another initiative that's now coming out of this task force is that we're joining in partnership with our friends over in Chandler who have a very good program that's designed towards working on the issue of prescription drugs and how the prescription drug abuse then leads to heroin addiction. And out of that, we've joined a partnership with them to now have a Chandler-Gilbert Prescription Drug Initiative that we've got members of our staff, members of the community coming together to work in partnership with a great program that's in existence there instead of reinventing the wheel, jumping on board and forming another partnership.
To the four of you, thank you again for inspiring confidence and hope and compassion. We are appreciated. For the council members, as you've received this update, to all of those in public safety, they carry this card which you have received. And then we extended the card and on Saturday, those who attended the educational clinic were given another resource guide with numbers to call and help available. And so this has also been given to the council. And for those who are here at council chambers, this particular resource guide is also available on the back table. Let's take our picture. And Councilmember Peterson, because you're here, we need you on the left side. Vice Mayor Taylor, we will move to communication from citizens. What requests do we have?
Mayor, we have two requests tonight.
Please proceed.
I'd like to call forward Gordon Ray. And after Mr. Ray, we'll hear from Mr. Tilke. Gordon, if you want to come up here, state your name, location of residence, and if you'll look to the lights for your three-minute queue, that would be wonderful.
All right. My name's Gordon Ray, live in Gilbert.
Gordon, yeah, you can pull the microphone there. Then we can hear you a little bit better.
My name's Gordon Ray, live in Gilbert. Been here many years. And I have to write this down because I don't think well on my feet. But as I was milking Bossy tonight, I was thinking of how best to present this request to you. And here are my thoughts. We all know that the best way to rule is at the lowest level of government possible. Code number 4.105.B.2.A. of the land use code, in my opinion, was made at too high of a level of government. I think this law is not constitutionally sound because it went over the top of the citizens, the HOAs and the CCNRs for the subdivisions. And this law reads residential uses in single-family districts. Roof-mounted mechanical equipment is prohibited. Ground-mounted mechanical equipment shall be screened from public view by a minimum of a four-foot-high fence. This law creates a real hardship to the citizens and builders. Most additions are small and they're on the back of the home and do not have enough attic space for the air handler. There has to be a special closet in the addition or the air handler has to be put in the attic of the existing home, which is a lot of times real hard to access and service. Most homes, if you drive, all these annexed county islands do not have any side block walls. Most of them don't have walls at all, or if they do have a wall, it'll be just a chain-link fence. And so they're unable to hide the units without putting up a special wall, which either a block wall or a wood fence to screen these units costs several hundred dollars. My request is that the town not regulate where the air conditioning units go, but allow that to be governed by the individual homeowners associations and the CCNRs for that social, for the subdivisions. Any questions?
Thank you. And Gordon, as especially our scouts, I'll note that on the agenda in this part of the meeting, communication from citizens, that the council has limitations on what we can do. And because it's not been put on the agenda for the public to see, the one option we have, and I will do that right now, is that we'll ask our town leadership to take this information and start the follow-up. Thank you. And it's not on the agenda, but I really wanted to find out more about how Bossy's doing, but we can talk later. Thank you. Vice Mayor Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tilke, just state your name, place of residence, and you'll see the lights for your three-minute queue. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis. Members of the council, Greg Tilke, live in Gilbert. Here tonight to present an update on our Gilbert Sister Cities program. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Bridgette Peterson for her support. She's been our liaison this past year, and we really appreciate all the help that you've been giving us. For those in the audience that aren't familiar with Gilbert Sister Cities, we started in 1995. We've got two sister cities, one in Antrim, Newton Abbey, Northern Ireland, and one in Lashawn, China. The highlight from this last year was really the trip to Lashawn, China, led by Mayor Lewis and Councilmember Peterson. We had a delegation of eight people that went over, had some great follow-up from that. We've got a couple items we're still working on. One was maybe a possible sister cities park in each community. And we've got, I think, Councilmember Peterson's helping with that. And we've got Gilbert leadership looking at doing a special project, alumni project, to raise some funds for that project. So we're looking forward to that. And then the other thing, they were talking about bringing a dance troupe over to Gilbert in September. They're going to be in Chicago anyway, so they thought they'd come over for either performance at the schools or maybe on one of the local stages. And we're still working toward, see if we can find something in that venue right there. So we're very excited about some opportunities there. We've also about a possible connection with Rudy Apodaca from Mercy Gilbert went with us on the trip. And he's got some possible connections to some doctors that Mercy Gilbert want to be connected to a hospital in Lashawn. So that's exciting, too. We're still working on that. We've just selected our four students going over to both of the communities this year. We select two students for each city. Four young women again going this year, and we're excited to get that going for the summer. And then the last thing, speaking of summer, we've got Jackie Dixon, the chief executive, Patrick's position over in Newton Abbey. They want to come over with her and two directors to kind of do a best practices. So I know Patrick, his team are working toward that right now to try to put together, I think they're here for about a week, whatever they want to know more about. So we're working on that. And we're still working on some export opportunities when Mayor Agnew was here from Newton Abbey a year and a half, two years ago. We're working with some companies that might present some opportunities there. So with that, I'll give, that's our annual report of kind of what's happening in Gilbert Sister Cities.
Thank you, Greg. And Councilmember Bridgette Peterson, I know, as we just said, limited. So if there's additional information, maybe at the, well, we have that current events from council members. If we did that agenda item, anything else you needed to add with Sister Cities?
I would say that I've connected Greg and Leah to work on a display case for the lobby to start to display some of our sister city artifacts that have come over from China and from Ireland because that went away when we did the remodel. from Ireland, because that went away when we did the remodel out here. So, we are working on that, too.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Taylor, I would assume, based on what you said, we don't have any other requests. Okay, thank you. We'll move to the consent calendar, and what requests do we have?
Mayor, there's no requests to pull any items tonight.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve items four and five. Item six A and B has identified changes on the agenda, and for the public, the change is to continue this item eight, both parts, to the March 24th meeting, and also approve items seven, eight, and nine as presented in the agenda.
Second. Okay, with that motion and second, please vote. Those items are approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you. We move to the public hearing. And Vice Mayor Taylor, do we have requests from the council or citizens to speak on either 10 or 11?
Mayor, I don't have any requests from council outside, but I do have an item, a follow-up item from study session on number 10.
Okay. And I believe that our, well, also our, from the town attorney's office, number 11, we wanted to have a little bit of a discussion, right?
Mayor, council, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Let's do them one at a time, and so I will open the public hearing on agenda item number 10. And Vice Mayor Taylor, please.
Mayor, thank you. As you remember, in the study session, I suggested we look at ways to clarify the language just slightly to make sure that those that are trying to comply will have a clear understanding. So, the proposed amendment to the wording that I received tonight from council would go as follows, and if we're okay with this, and I'd be happy to move this as amended. So, the wording would read, substitution of non-commercial messages for commercial messages or any legal non-commercial message or any legally compliant sign structure or mounting device is allowed. So, the change is really just to add legally compliant as a descriptor to what kinds of signs could go up, so clarify that.
Seems reasonable, so let me just see as that sinks in, and also from a legal standpoint, we have heads nodding, and so...
Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. So, any other discussion on 10? I will close the public hearing on agenda item number 10 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the language as presented by Councilmember Taylor, or Vice Mayor Taylor, excuse me.
Is there a second? Okay. With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you. I open the public hearing on agenda item number 11. We had a study session discussion on 11, and there is a document for the council to review that, Town Attorney Hamblin, would you like to just give a quick summary, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, after our discussion and study session on Tuesday, further review indicated that perhaps we need another clause, because under the definition then provided, governmental posting on a door might be considered a handbill. For example, a census worker, you know, posting on the door saying that, you know, we've tried to catch you, haven't been able to catch you, and so we leave this notice on your door, or perhaps a stop-work order, or a, you know, evacuation, you know, or uninhabitable residents or building. Those types of postings, we did not intend to be handbills that could be subject to this prohibition. Consequently, the language you have before you in red letters would be a necessary amendment to exclude those types of communications that we would not wish to be, come under the purview of this ordinance. Thank you.
Any discussion on that proposed addition? Okay. I close the public hearing on agenda item number 11, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to amend the proposed definition of handbills in section 14-166 to add the words, "or any materials distributed by a government entity that serves a governmental purpose." Otherwise, approve the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you. Vice Mayor Taylor, I believe we've covered number, did we cover 12 in the consent calendar?
Twelve and 13.
Twelve and 13. Okay, thank you. And...
Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion, number 12, if that's okay.
Please.
Mayor, I move that we appoint the Arts and Culture Board, Lois Blake and Sandra Nicholson with a term beginning March 3, 2016, and ending January 31, 2019, and Robert Mesnick to complete the remainder of the term, ending January 31, 2018, and Jared Sherwood as an alternate member with a term beginning March 3, 2016, and ending January 31, 2017.
Thank you. With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you. Agenda item number 13, does that go to Vice Mayor Taylor? Please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Elizabeth Harper and Felicia Vander Mollen as two regular members with terms beginning March 3, 2016, and ending January 31, 2019, and Theo McCalvin as an alternate member with a term beginning March 3, 2016, and ending January 31, 2017.
Second.
Okay, with that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. Thank you. On agenda item number 14, do council members wish to have a presentation, or should we proceed?
Proceed.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 14 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. Thank you. This feels like a seven oh night.
Yeah.
Okay. Agenda item number 15, board commission and committee reports. Councilmember Victor Peterson.
This may belong more under current events, but I never do that in the right order, so why start now? I'm excited, Mayor, to announce that we're going to have a kickoff breakfast for the I Run for Good event that you talked about earlier. We're very grateful to the Gilbert Police Department for agreeing to host that event. The idea is to raise funds for the Gilbert Police Department to be able to use, actually, as needed, when needed, for victims of domestic violence. There are a lot of resources, speaking to Sergeant Warden on this, and he mentioned he's the, he's the one in charge of the family violence unit, but he mentioned that it may be only 5% to 10% of families that they need that extra help, but there are times that there's just gaps, and it would really be great if they had a fund. And so, we're working with them to establish a fund. There's different options. We're confident we'll get it resolved, but we're going to raise money for that fund to make that initial deposit so they can use that and really help those families in crisis. So, the event is April 12 at the Gilbert Police Department from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. We're also grateful, Mayor, that you've agreed to be our emcee, and very much looking forward to the event.
Thank you. Other announcements? Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Mayor, I would let you know that last night at the Planning Commission meeting, we decided that it would be best to let the Planning Commission know the plan that we discussed at our study session the other night of the opportunity to maybe merge the Planning Commission with the Design Review Board, and they took it pretty well. A couple people stepped right up and said, well, my term is almost up, so it'd probably be a great time for me not to reapply, and we understand, and we look forward to seeing how this all plays out. The other thing that the Planning Commission discussed last night that we will see on our next agenda are the two properties that we're looking to put on the ballot, so I won't get into that, but they did have good, long discussion on those properties and the purview of the Planning Commission towards those properties. So, I think we'll have more discussion at our level and our purview as a council.
Thank you. I think we're to a report from our town manager. Please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This morning, we had our annual MVP awards for our employees who embody the values our organization has embraced in how we go about our duties, and so I'd like to read those names in each category that won from the town and thank them for the tremendous service to our citizens. For the accountability value, our winner was Patricia Jordan, who is a Public Works Utility Supervisor. Communication was Linda McGuire, Information Technology IT Analyst. Innovation was Sheila Carpenter, Finance and Management Services Accounts Payable Technician. Integrity was Kelly Russell, Finance and Management Services Administrative Assistant. Learning was Tim Simonton, Development Services Inspection Supervisor. And respect was Laura Young, Parks and Recreation Recreation Coordinator. Again, we can't thank them enough for everything they do in serving our citizens and embodying the values that we embrace in this organization. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Additional reports from council on current events? Vice Mayor Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I'd like to thank and just recognize Rod Buchanan for a couple of excellent sessions on the Parks and Rec, excuse me, the park in South Gilbert that we've been working on with a lot of the community feedback. And I would just want to highlight, and anyone following the council meeting tonight, just refer them, if they didn't make it to those sessions, to the Parks and Recreation part of our website. There's a lot of really great information on their summary videos, a lot of the artifacts that they went through. So, we know that there are a lot of people that are interested, a lot of them came, and there's a great resource there for them to follow what happened and continue to give feedback on that website. So, again, Rod, thank you for that. And then, Mayor, I also wanted to just update, I enjoyed visiting with the Rotary Club this morning on Prop 123. As you know, I love public education, and 123 is going to be a $3.5 billion shot in the arm over 10 years for public ed, and many of us have been publicly supporting that, and I don't know if it's in order, but I would love to see a resolution at our next council meeting where this council publicly supports Prop 123. And just wanted to kind of put that out there as something that we can think about if we're comfortable with that. But anyways, again, thank the Rotary Club for the service and support that they provide in our community as one of our wonderful service organizations, and just wanted to throw that thought out for 123.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I follow up with something, since Patrick reminded me from the recognition this morning that I'm sorry I missed? The Chamber of Commerce posted today that tomorrow is Employee Appreciation Day, so I just wanted to say that I appreciate all of our employees, as I know we all do, and this would be our opportunity to say that, and say that Wallet Hub also posted that Gilbert is in the top 20 of, what did they say? Oh, hardest-working cities in America, and we're 11th. So, I think that's, it's the, we're the least stressed, too. That's right.
Yes. Is that because of the council, to our town manager, council?
They couldn't have polled our employees, I'm sure, because I know that they work very hard, but we're obviously hardest-working, and we're the least stressed, and we appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
I want to echo a little bit what Vice Mayor Taylor said. Probably all of us were at different parks, meetings this week, and the previous two sessions as well, and I can't say strong enough how much we recommend citizens get involved in this process. This is going to be a huge part, and obviously, it's going to cost a significant amount of money, and the upkeep's going to be a good amount of money as well. And so, the process is not done by any means. There's still plenty of time to give input, and we all have different needs and wants with our kids and with our families, so please get involved and continue to help make this a great success in South Gilbert Park.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
Well, I wanted to share a wonderful report about our town manager. So, a couple weeks ago, you know, this is, you know, part of your performance review. I want to share, you know, a lot of good things. So, a couple Saturdays ago, I get this phone call from a resident that was not very, very happy, and I think we all know that, and we saw the videos and emails of the midge-fly plague down by our South Recharge facility, we're, you know, pond area. And then, as the homeowner was sharing with me, if you could only come to my home while I have dinner, you would know what my family's going through, and I said, I'd be glad to come down for dinner. And then there was a little bit of silence, and I, no, no, not really. In fact, I opened my calendar, and I saw that my Monday and Tuesday was open, and the homeowner said, well, I'll get back with you. So, in a couple hours, the homeowner got back and said, my wife was open to having you come out at 5:00. And then I said, guess who I'm going to bring with me? I'm going to bring our town manager, Patrick. So, Patrick and I headed down to the Bridges. We walked the neighborhood, then the neighbors came out to meet with us, and we were trying to see, you know, how bad the plague was. Unfortunately, there was really windy that day, and a lot of the midge flies were gone. Well, then we went out to the pond area, and then I'm looking out in the distance in the pond, and I'm seeing this car going through the pond area on the little road, and I'm like, how did that car get in there? I'm just like, was lost, and it was just kind of creeping along. And then the car came up to where we're at, and the door opened, and it was Mark Horn. And I said, look at that. So, Mark came out to explain the kind of things that they were doing with the department as to mitigate, you know, all that, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful, you know, time meeting with our neighbors. And then Patrick made some comment to me, you know, if this was in Phoenix, this would never have happened. And I said, well, because we're Gilbert, you know, we care for our residents and our neighbors. So, anyways, I want to thank Patrick for coming down with me, you know, and, you know, and I did have dinner. They made me have dinner. I had a great time eating with them and all that, absolutely.
Which echoes Employee Appreciation Day, that our town manager eats midge-fly burgers, and Mark Horn comes out of nowhere, and so I think for all seven members of the council, we do appreciate all of our team members.
Mayor, just so the record's clear, I did not actually get dinner. I left after inhaling a subsequent number of midge flies.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the participation, and to the council, after we adjourn this meeting, we will meet for the executive session. Meeting adjourned.